We will be getting started, I think, once we have a quorum. So right now, I see four board members with us tonight. So I think if we get one more, we'll be able to get started. And we are expecting at least two more that I know of.
Oh, I like this system where everyone has a laptop better.
Oh, good.
I mean, I'm sure it's a pain, and I'm sorry, Michael, but it's just that I like to see Charles, you know? See, I even made it way. Look at that.
I largely shaved my head.
Joanna is with us.
Hello, everyone.
Oh, hey, Joanna. Nice to see you.
In here.
Sorry, I have to jump screens. Oh, I see Roberto. Hey, Roberto.
Well.
And Bob. Hey, Rob. Hey, Bob. How you doing?
I'm well, David. How are you?
Good, thank you. Thanks for joining us. And I don't know who the call-in number is. I'm sorry. Hello, call-in.
Alejandro, welcome. Are you on the line?
I am, I am. Thank you for having me. I'm about to, I'll come on video in just a second.
Okay.
Fix your hair first, right?
Exactly.
Okay, while we're waiting, I'd like to express my appreciation for our operations manager, Yudis. We had a technical problem that we identified early this morning, and she figured out an alternative way to make this all happen. So thank you, Yudis. I believe that this evening, we will not be joined by our chair, Emily Fernandez. Unfortunately, she had a commitment that came up and was not within her control that she could not miss. And so she sends her regrets and we'll share a note from her a little bit later in the meeting. I think that offline, the board is planning or was planning to start the meeting with a vote. Our secretary, Charles Saum, has agreed to chair this meeting, which we appreciate.
You're starting with a vote, you said?
Well, we'll vote you the gavel.
Okay.
The board will vote you the gavel.
Yeah, in Emily's absence, she asked that someone chair the meeting. So because Charles is present and a member of the executive committee, it seemed the most reasonable. Maho and I are both here and we'll all, of course, relay the minutes and anything that comes up to Emily. I don't think we have a reason for executive session this evening anyway. So if that's okay with the rest of the board members, I think we should proceed under that. So if it's all right, I'd call for a vote, a motion to vote that Charles can serve as the chair for this meeting. Okay, it looks like I have a motion from Maho and a second from Alejandro. Charles, can you manage to keep minutes and chair the meeting?
I think I can do it.
All right, buddy. Thank you. With that all being said, let's put it to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. And not being in the room, I think that gets us there. So, Charles, take it away.
Okay, this 6:05, we call the meeting to order. First order of business, I suppose, is review the agenda. Is that right, Michael? Or approve the agenda?
Yes, that's right. The agenda is on screen now. It was shared out earlier in the pre-reads. One notable item of business is looking at our academic calendar for next year, otherwise pretty routine.
Okay. All right, I move to approve the agenda. Anyone second? All right, Melody, seconds. All right, everyone. Say aye. All in favor, thank you.
Aye.
All right. Second order of business is approval of the January minutes. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? Any corrections, suggestions? All right, with none being heard, and I move to approve the minutes. Do I have a second? All right, Melody, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, with that, we've turned to new business, and Michael, you can take it away.
Thank you, Charles. Thanks for making it here through the cold or making it here through illness or over the internet or however we got here. I'm hoping that we'll be joined by one more board member this evening, and we appreciate it. So start with some good news, and I'm not saying there's bad news, but we'll start with some good news. The Omicron wave that we were in the thick of when we last met is largely behind us. So the the view from last month is here. And you can see today, we're here. So we really made it through. I would like to express again my appreciation for our teachers and our staff and our leadership team, as well as our students and families. It was not an obvious decision to stay in person. We did have teachers and staff who caught Omicron and had to be out sick. But I am very proud of how, as a community, we rallied, we kept students learning, we didn't lose momentum. And as a team, we really covered for each other and kept things going for kids. So again, I appreciate that very much. Fortunately, the other trend that we were looking at last time has also improved with everybody sort of getting over their illnesses or student attendance. Though we'd still like to push it even higher, it's back to the 92, 93, 94% range. You can see the dip that happened because of Omicron there in late January. January. So we're glad about that and hope to not have to go through something like that again ever, or at least very soon. And we're joined by David Estrada. Good evening, sir.
We have all the board present, I believe, either a person or...
Yeah, I think all but our chair, so pretty good. So I'm joined tonight by, of course, our principal, Joanna. And we will kind of share this portion. But I will start by just saying that, speaking of COVID, we are standing by for updates. Based on the governor's press conference earlier this afternoon, we're not expecting an imminent change to any statewide mask mandates or other COVID policies as they relate to schools. I think there's hope that we could have the ability to make, to regain autonomy over some of those policies in the next few weeks. But that's going to depend on the governor's office. So we will keep everyone not only posted but engaged, in particular, our parent representatives. I'm hoping that we can be talking in the next couple of weeks and just making sure that we understand, you know, the best course of action should we end up having more flexibility. But in the meantime, our policies are unchanged, as you can see from the pictures. And, you know, we will, we will keep everyone posted, including in between board meetings if news happens. The second thing I wanted to mention was, of course, we are in Black History Month. And our scholars have really enjoyed the combination of different activities that our teachers have interwoven through the day in recognition of Black history, including, you know, the history and heritage of African and African-American and Afro-Latino people in our country. We've seen it in music class, we've seen it in regalouts, we've seen it in morning meetings. And, you know, we did not have a parade. We have to figure that out with February weather, how we can do some of the things we did for Hispanic Heritage Month. But it was very much a focus during this month and continues to be through the end of February. So we had a chance to meet with the academic committee, and we'll come back to that, I think, later in the meeting. But I'd like to turn this over to share some of the updates that we've been talking about with that committee, with the full board. So Joanna, do you want to kind of talk us through some of what we've been up to?
Sure, I'm gonna ask my D P to fill in the details if I miss anything. So continuing on focus on systems and curricula, definitely, we continue to work on our MTS, MTFS system, which, you know, it just consists of so many layers. We are definitely excited that our new intervention groups have been, have started. So we have looked at data and we have consolidated those groups to make sure that our highest, you know, our kids that are the highest support get the interventions that they need. So we started to roll out those RTI groups. Curricula, we continue to work on it. One highlight that I want to share is that fonética gramática is part of the SLA program, which is something that was uncovered, like we have a fonética gramática program. But we realized that the, what taller escritura and lectura include is a lot more rigorous and aligned to our SLA program. So that was one of our uncoverings. And we are starting to work with that and see how that works in the pacing, because it makes more sense for kids. But overall...
And those are both Spanish-language phonics programs, right? So that's what the team's looking at to make sure we're using the best resources.
Exactly. But we continue to work on really digging into our SLA program, you know, the curriculum. Wit and Wisdom is the next curriculum that we're gonna unpack a little bit more. So that work is still in progress. Our goal is that by mid-March, we have a solid plan for next steps, for next school year.
And if I can interject for a moment, speaking of Wit and Wisdom, I included this in our written updates. But you know, that's a program we've been piloting for Integrated English Language Arts and Social Studies. We've been in communication with the authorizer that we have, the Board of Regents and New York State Education Department. They've determined that formally adopting Wit and Wisdom actually would constitute a material revision to our charter. Essentially, sometimes when you change the charter, it's not as big of a deal. And other times, it's material and requires more of a public process and a vote of the Board of Regents. Those, even those are routine. It's not as if they're impossible or anything. But we are in communication with the authorizer about what would be the next steps to take that forward. So it actually dovetails nicely with the fact that our principal and her team are evaluating that and thinking about it as we continue piloting that resource. So if you, if you get an email in the coming weeks about a new process around Wit and Wisdom, it's not coming out of nowhere. This is a continuation of our dialogue with the authorizer about this curriculum. And of course, the underlying thing is it's a content-rich curriculum. It builds background knowledge at the same time that it's building skills. And so, you know, that's always been, since day one, something that was, that was important to us.
Michael, I'm sorry to jump in here. I'm sorry to jump in.
Go ahead.
I think that we need to talk at some point, not now. But at some point, you and us and the members of this board need to talk about why the authorizers find this change to be material. And what's going on that we didn't believe to be material last time we had this discussion? So I appreciate you bringing it to everyone's attention, but I think it's important that we all have an understanding of what's going on with that. And, and I mean, to make sure we help you, but also just to know what happens. And this may not be the moment. It's definitely, you know, likely not, but I do want to have an understanding. And I think the whole board needs to, needs to know that something we thought was maybe not is now going to be a material change. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Yeah, no, that's a fair point. What I would say briefly is, number one, you know, we were going based on past communications. And number two, I don't think we're the only school that's sort of encountered this. And I think that when we have Emily back in the group, she can speak to that from her perspective, since we were chatting about it when she visited the school this past week. So I think she can offer a bunch of context as to how to think about why that would happen. I agree with you. It seems like it should be a pretty obvious decision. But in this case, we sort of got some revised guidance, and so we're trying to figure out how to, what to do next.
Okay, I appreciate that. And I agree that I think Emily's insight would be valuable. So I, but I just don't want to forget it. So, you know, this is my putting a note on the minutes here that I want to talk about this.
Thank you. Test prep?
So test prep and practicing, practicing testing, today was day one. In all of the history of LEAP, that we had K to three students taking interim assessments. And I say this with a lot of pride and like just a lot of happiness because and joy. Because it's a lot, right? We have teachers that have not, do not have the experience of really administering interim assessments. And then we have our kindergarten babies that are expected to sit down and take a test and stay at level zero for a part of the time. Of course, there's breaks right after 10, 15 minutes, take breaks. But this is, it was a success today, just to see how teachers worked together and collaborated. And leaders walked through in classrooms and just observing, we were able to collect additional data to move our work forward. Kids were motivated, like kids were walking in the building excited and saying, "I'm taking a test today to show what I know." So I think that the foundation of building a culture of learning and feedback is really blossoming in LEAP. So we had morning huddles with teachers in the morning, just to reset those expectations, reinforce those expectations, and have the max questions and just feel really good about the work they were doing. And then we had afternoon debriefs. We'll do it again tomorrow. Tomorrow's day two. And we will be taking to our K1. Had foundations assessment today, all of phonics. And tomorrow, we have our first grade to third grade continuing with ELA and SLA. Third graders, I want to add here, third grade specifically, the growth that we have made. I mean, I think I know of count already of the weeks of test prep. But these kids, in a couple of weeks, the confidence is amazing. In the beginning, they just was like, "We gotta take a state exam. We're scared. We don't know this." Now they're tackling texts by themselves independently without prompting. Our kids are really thinking about what they're reading, using thinking jobs and annotating text. So, you know, we're on the right track. And I just have to say that our teachers, not only to this whole COVID thing, the surge of COVID, but also like just building, establishing and building that culture of learning and feedback for teachers, leaders, teachers, but also the kids. Like the kids are giving each other feedback. So I'm just happy that the goal was met, that we, that it's a good, a good thing to take tests. And it's not a bad thing. And it's data. And it also is going to build our foundation for our third graders. I would end with saying that in the beginning, when we first started test prep, our third graders were, they were writing, writing on their tests. They refused to take the test, our first practice test, and, you know, that shifted. So the foundation that we're setting for our K of one and second grade is that when they get to third and they need to tackle these state exams, they're gonna have the confidence and they're gonna have those testing habits already developed to be able to tackle the state exam.
Thank you. Yeah, I would just underscore that it's been terrific to have have a team of experienced instructional leaders helping us get ready for something that we've never had to do before as a school. And, you know, although our students have certainly been assessed, you all, if you've been on the board for a while, you've seen plenty of data, the school building-wide experience of by hallways and, you know, special rooms for accommodations and everyone following Proctor rules and specifically, you know, checking on New York State standards in each grade level. All of that, that whole experience has been something new for our students. And as you can hear, you know, we've been giving it a relentlessly positive frame. So this is not about stressing anybody out. It's celebrating and stepping up to a challenge. That being said, we're also not going to become a school that has big pep rallies, right? Where it's not going to dominate their experience of school. But everything has a season, and right now, it's really fun to be in this season with our students. When we met last, we had mentioned that we had hired a new dean of instruction to join our team. Reba Feliciano has begun work now and has really made a terrific impact working with our first and second grade teachers. I see vigorous head nodding from my colleagues. And then just yesterday, we were able to welcome a new second grade intervention teacher. And so we're glad to have her onboard. We still, you know, could benefit from another mid-year hire, but there are no gaps in the staffing plan. And we welcomed a couple of great new educators after we had a couple of needs that mid-year. So wanted to share an update about that. And then finally, if you're a family member, you may have seen communications about, sorry, I'm just seeing a shout-out from one of our parents. Thank you to all the incredible teachers, support staff and administrators. So I don't know if that goes back to COVID or what topic, but that's generally something I would agree with. The, the families may have seen some communications about a video shoot that happened last week in the middle of everything else. Truth be told, it was a really fun experience for those of us who got to be a part of it. Part of our enrollment process is telling the story of LEAP. And that means we need to show it as it is now. And you know what? We have a new building, we have new leaders, we have bigger kids, we have masks on. So the previous videos were sort of feeling a little dated. And it was really fun to have students in full uniforms, even when they had a gym day, and to have stakeholders tell their stories. So I'm really excited in the next couple of weeks to share those with all of you. We use them on social media to get interest in enrollment and to get interest from prospective teachers and career paths here. But it's also just always nice to get a high-production look at what really goes on. And the best endorsement I heard was from our videographer, who, after two days of filming, said, "If I had kids in this neighborhood, I would send them here." So I thought, okay, great. Because he had, he had no former connection to us. But that's only one tactic. We are, we are also, you know, accepting and receiving applications for next year. We spoke with the finance committee about this. Next month, we should have, you know, the start of some numbers ahead of our lottery. And, you know, looking forward to making that campaign push. We do want to make sure, of course, that we have a healthy waiting list for next year. And so more to come about that. Anything else that I should have included about academics?
If I could just say one thing, in terms of our multi-tiered system of support, not only do we provide intervention in both languages based on need and what would be most suitable for children, but we do also provide enrichment, which is taking a shift to project-based learning. So our students who are high flyers and are performing at an above-grade level also have the opportunity to be taken so that they can continue to be pushed to new heights.
That's great. And maybe we can actually share at our next academic committee meeting some of those details about that, because I know it's important that we are challenging everybody.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I'm really glad to hear that. I did ask about that in a previous meeting, I think in December, November. And I'm really glad, I'm glad that you brought it up, because I think making sure that there's time to enrich every student that we have is really, you know, the most we can do. So like, I know it's, you know, it's tough, but we try to do everything we can do, right? So I appreciate it. And, you know, I thank you guys.
Absolutely. So I went through a bunch of content there. I'd love to hear any, any questions or thoughts on any of those topics.
Sorry, I jumped in and made my comment before you asked, but that's it.
Ahead of the curve. All right, I think everybody's good for now. Okay, if something occurs to you, we can certainly go back. Charles?
The test prep. Would it be, I saw the bulletin board, it's about 30-some odd days till ELA and 40-some odd days to the math. How do you feel so far? Is this the first assessment? It's not the first assessment. Is the first, today's the first assessment?
No, well, today was the mock exam for third grade, which means that we mimic everything as if it was the state exam. So teachers had to go to a room to drop off their technology, grab the test. So factoring, you know, everything is mimicked as if it was the day of. But we've had other interim assessments with third grade throughout the year. This was just a mock, like we followed every logistical item as if it was the day of the state exam.
Are you gonna do that again for the test?
Yes, so we have another ELA coming up in two and a half weeks, and then we have the math mock. But the math mock happens after the ELA state exam. So we have one more ELA mock exam before the actual state exam.
And when will you get the results back from this one? Today?
So we are grading tomorrow. We're norming and grading, so we will have all of the data in by tomorrow. Yeah. So everybody's grading and entering their data, K to three tomorrow. And we're starting our analysis and our action plans. So we're starting that work tomorrow, but our action plans will be implemented when we come back from break on the 24th.
And who will grade the actual state exam?
So the state exam is picked up by the state, and they have, the state has a center where they do all of the grading. Like, we don't, we don't, we don't do grading.
Collect them and give them to us?
So they're very strict, like the state is very strict. That's why I said that in the mock, we mimic everything. I mean, from the number of pencils to being completely quiet in the room where we pick up tests. So one of the important things about these mock exams is that we debrief what doesn't go well and what goes well, so that we're 100% ready for the actual test. So I would just say, like, for example, there was a little bit of talking, like some teachers were talking when they were picking up the test. So that's just a quick fix. But on the real, actual day of the state exam, we have to make sure that teachers are not talking, like it's completely silent. It's just state regulation, so making sure that we follow that. So that also includes that we have, we have choices, right? Like they could come pick up the test, we could go drop it off, but we're not grading them. They grade them.
I really love the idea that you bring some joy to testing, because it's not, those aren't two words I hear in the same sentence very often. But I'm just curious, since it'll happen while we're not here, from a child's perspective, from a scholar's perspective, how will they experience the closing the loop, like understanding the results of the test? And because you're establishing habit, but you're also doing a test. So how do they receive that, hear that? Just frame that up for me so I can picture it.
Yeah, I like that question. So I think that, I mean, the first thing is that all teachers debrief with their kids today. So after this practice test, how did that feel? How did we do? And kids were able to share. And then we spoke to them prior to testing. I mean, they've been talking about it for, since Friday. And then when the results come in, it's the same thing. So they're gonna have this grading, and every teacher's gonna meet with every individual child to talk about how they did. What are you working on? What did you do well? What are you working on? And every student has a goal that they're working towards, you know, to achieve based on the gap or the trends that we see in the test. And I think it's about celebrating, and yes, I think it's very, it can be challenging to establish a culture of like testing and joy, because like you said, like that combination is quite tricky. But I think that at LEAP, and I'm not gonna surprise, but... that combination is quite tricky. But I think that at LEAP, and I'm not going to surprise, but I'm very impressed with how well it's going because I anticipated it to be more of a challenge. And I think it's just because naturally, like the different cultures in the school and the staff, like we're naturally like full of alegría. Even through challenges, so it's kind of, so it's more, and we have those relationships, so the teachers will come and be like, do I know, how do I do this? So I think it's about like really investing the kids and the why. We need to explain to the kids, like, you, if you want to be a police officer, you need to take a test. Right? So like really, really making those connections to the real world. I mean, of course, where they are, right? You're not going to speak to a five-year-old the way you speak to a nine-year-old. But I think that making those real-world connections, debriefing, stating the why, and making them feel good when they do succeed, right? It's okay, you got, you got thirty-five percent, you didn't get to ninety, but this is what you do well and what are we going to work for getting that ninety? And I think it starts with staff and we need to, we need to model that. Like I need to walk in the class and the same thing, like celebrate what teachers are doing well, the growth that you made and what are the goals. And then it just trickles down to students.
Thank you. That's helpful for for those of us who aren't in the environment with you on an ongoing basis. And it sounds like you're contextualizing and you're carrying them to the model coach mentor. Not the model, not just the model coach mentor practices, but the feelings
Exactly.
into what the children are experiencing. So thank you.
And I'm just asked that my son, he goes to a grader and in the beginning he was really nervous with the test. So nervous, I don't know what to do. And now he's very comfortable, like, I gotta go to sleep early because I'm not supposed to tomorrow. And then Lila, like secondly, it's like, me too. I'm like, no, it's only for third. He's like, no, I'm, I'm also going to have tests. And she was so excited, like, you wanna go to sleep?
It's working.
Because it's two, it's not only one. So both of them are excited.
Great to hear.
I'm curious. I'm sorry. I don't want to cut anybody off. I'm just curious, I'm curious if you always share the test results with the students or not. I'm, I'm just curious sort of what the thought process is either way, really. You know, I'm kind of curious. I think it's encouraging to teach them to handle the situation appropriately. And then I'm just also curious how you maintain a focus on teaching and development in that environment, right? When you're really trying to teach, as it were, sort of two things, right?
So the the two things you're referring to, can you spell that out a little more, David?
Oh, I mean, you're, you're doing your general curriculum that you're trying to teach, but you're also trying to teach the skills of test-taking. Right? And so like, there's a certain amount of commitment to that process. But there's also like a certain amount of teaching time. So like, I'm just kind of curious where the sharing of the scores on the tests come in with this? Like, are you using that as a, a teach, an instructive tool for the teachers? I mean, it sounded like you're sharing it with the students, but I'm just kind of curious about how all of that plays into continuing development of the general academic curriculum. Like I, you know, I'm, I've obviously taken many tests. I understand the importance of being able to do that. So like, I think it's valuable. I'm just, I'm trying to understand how it all.
Yeah, so I'm hearing, I'm hearing a couple of things. I'll start off with saying that when we share with students, we're not really, like, we're sharing how the, the, the goals that they have, what they achieved, and then what the next steps are. It's not really about the number, it's about skill and what content they're doing what really well on, those skills, and then what they're working towards. So we don't really focus too much on the numbers with the kids. Now, the teachers, of course, we have strategic planning where we, we analyze the data, what the students do well, whole group, small group and individual. Then we come up with an action plan that has implications to our instruction. So that's kind of the work, the gist of the work we're doing with teachers. And then regarding the balance, that is really a great question, David, because we needed to really plan strategically how to stay on pace to make sure that we covered all the standards. But then we needed to also not even close the gap, but like, set the foundation and develop the test-taking strategies and habits that our kids did not have. So that's where we did nine hours a week. So every day from eight eighteen to nine eighteen, I said it to the last number, but that is the schedule, where our third grade, they, our third grade kids are there, they're practicing the test-taking skills. But they're also reading and it's, and it's also conceptual at the same time. Like, they need to be able to tackle tests and come up with main ideas. And then Thursdays, we have a longer period of time, it's a half a day, so we have three hours with breaks in between. And the rest of the days during the week, then it's back to our pacing where we have our ELA, our SLA, our math. But we are intentional with the data we're collecting during test prep to ensure that we're targeting students during that regular pacing instructional time. Does that, does that make sense?
That's exactly what I was looking for. Really, that's exactly what I wanted to know. Thank you very much. I think that, that, that makes a lot of sense.
Gracias. David, David, David.
Well, just in addition to that, the test is driven by the New York State standards as well as our curriculum. So all things are guided and driven by the standards, so therefore complement one another in terms of skill and strategy.
Sure. And I, and I, I understand that, like, when you're posing questions, you know, that's all part of learning. So like, it's not that they're just taking a test in the vacuum and learning test-taking skills in the vacuum, but I, but I'm also, I was just thinking about in terms of confidence and growth and how you balance those two competing aspects, right? Like when you have, especially when you have a child, like you were saying, that may be struggling. You know, to put them in that environment where they struggle, you know, is, is often tougher than. So I was just trying to, to think it through and I appreciate the answer very much.
Roberto, I think you had a question?
Yeah, I first want to congratulate Joanna and the team for, you know, pulling together so much in such little time to make it all happen for all our kids. So congratulations on that. I'm really interested in learning more about, and in keeping with our federación, Carino, the aspect of feedback that you talked about, when you conduct, or when the teachers conduct the feedback with the students. I know that these tests are done in English. And so is the feedback and that back and forth exchange kept in English? Or in keeping with that child's kind of cultura and confianza and building that confidence, do you, do the teachers go back and forth?
No, it's back and forth and, and our English language learners, you know, the students that their primary language is Spanish, that does happen in Spanish. So yeah, it's not just English. That being said, I mean, we, I, I don't want to talk, you know, take too much time, but, you know, we have right now some challenges, right? Where our kids are, there's still, you know, gaps in the English language and the ELA exam is in English. So how do we build that confidence, like David's saying, not only with the gap in test-taking habits, but also language? So how do, so there is a lot, there's scaffolding, there's, you know, we need to scaffold, we need to use prompts. But we also want to push our kids to also speak the English or like tackle the text even though they're struggling. So yes, I think there's a lot of components to that when supporting our English language learners. But yes, we do have those feedback conversations in Spanish.
I think that's a fascinating, a, a number of fascinating points, Michael, that it would be great to document even in a short report that we could share with the Office of Languages at the state office to let them know how we're tackling it and how LEAP is leaping over some of the challenges and making that happen. But it'll begin to open the door and the conversation on how these tests should be administered and maybe we end up being like a model that over time can be developed over. But I think taking the leadership and putting that out there, even as a series of questions to the state. They have their office of world languages, you know, and so it'll be great to give them that, that input from you and the team.
Yeah. And of course, the math exam also has a different profile in terms of how English language learners and, and other learners approach it. So, you know, maybe that's something we can also dig into when we, when we meet next time, when we're starting to shift our focus there as well. Yeah, good points. Anybody else have questions, comments on anything we've covered? Maho looks to be fine. Okay. Well, I believe our next item of business is to consider our calendar for next year. So those of you in the room, does everybody have a copy of the calendar? Thank you. Those of you online on the board had this circulated, but here are some of the highlights. Instead of four days, three or four days of kindergarten-only orientation classes at the beginning of the year, we're going to stick to two. So kindergarteners for next year will start out on a Thursday, August twenty-fifth, and then Friday, the twenty-sixth. Team feels like that's the right amount of time for that kindergarten-only introduction. All students will then begin with us on Monday, August twenty-ninth. And then the school year continues through the twenty-third of June, barring any snow days, but I think those are, are unlikely. The, the changes that you see reflected in the, in the, in the draft calendar here, there's a few significant ones I just wanted to call out. And one has to do with the schedule more than the calendar. The weekly routine that we've had at LEAP Academy these last three years, two and a half years, has been to have a Wednesday early dismissal day, allowing our teachers to get extra planning and training time and, you know, giving the kids a bit of a break. Many charter schools have that schedule. But many others choose to do their early dismissal on a Friday. And that, I think, I think I'm correct in saying that that sort of allows the instructional leaders to sort of sum up the week, sum up the week against weekly goals with our teachers, rather than having sort of a midweek meeting where you've, you've got weekly goals, but you're only a couple of days into it. And so we've talked it over with operations and our academic team and our after-school program, which also has a lot of, of families who do the one-day after-school coverage on Wednesdays. We would anticipate still offering that on Fridays, but we think some families might appreciate the chance to sort of start the weekend early. So, so this is my recommendation. Another couple, and we can come back to any questions anybody has, but a couple of other changes just to note. We effectively start the year for teachers about a week early. New teachers starting really at the very beginning of August for a full week of just new teacher orientation. And then all of our returning teachers coming the following week. And then, you know, and you would, you might expect that not to be very popular. However, I think the trade-off is going to be popular, which is this calendar allows us to provide a full week off for President's Day as well as a full week for Thanksgiving. And so for our families and our staff members who have families overseas, who they like to visit, we know that those longer breaks are very much appreciated. And so I got a nice push from our leadership team. Can we find a way to expand that? And I think it will be well received. That being said, there's a bunch of dates here and so I'd welcome any questions or comments about this.
Thank you for sharing this. I took a look at this beforehand. How many instructional days are we sitting at now for twenty-two, twenty-three? What's the number?
A hundred eighty.
You're exactly at a hundred eighty?
Yes.
Got it. Okay, got it. Is there any, I guess, at this point, then you're, that's where the, the built-in snow days, if you will, at the end of the schedule would be correct? Got it. Is there any move, there wouldn't be any, you wouldn't be entertaining any use of any asynchronous days as a, as a way to, in case we run into that? Like, I, I don't know what they're doing for this coming year, so perhaps we're still waiting on guidance, but I know that that's been a way for us, at least at Uncommon, to be able to deal with coming up against that a hundred eighty day, a hundred eighty day mark.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a great question. If I, I'm sorry, did I cut you off?
No, 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 go ahead.
Okay. It's, so, you know, we, we have, we have not planned this out in detail. What I would guess is that if we were anticipating sort of a tack-on day at the end, we would probably have a look at whether that can be, you know, an online day or something like that. In general, I think we like sticking to in-person and, and that one modality. On a couple of occasions, I think we've, over the years, we've had to do sort of a late start for a snow day. But I don't see us being a school that's quick to sort of like shift to online for a day or something like that. But you're right, being at one eighty, which for everyone else's information, that's the required minimum number of instructional days. We're way over the minimum number of instructional hours because of our expanded, you know, schedule. But that's where, yeah, a couple of extra snow days are possible. And, yeah, I think if anything, if, if we were to go to asynchronous or online, that would probably be something at the end of the year versus like in the middle of the year.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Michael. The second point, second one is just a small thing, which is, might be just like a, a, just a way that was represented in the drafted calendar, but just something to look out for is January second. Oh, no, actually, I take it back. It's fine. I think I, I had misread it initially. You're fine. Thank you for sharing.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. January second is a, is a professional development day, so our teachers are back right after Christmas before the kids return.
I was just working out my September dates for mystery fest. Is, is Labor Day the fourth or the fifth in twenty-twenty-two? Just check, just check me because I, I'm more focused on the eighteenth, the, the two, the two following weekends when we're trying to organize.
Joanna has this full calendar version. Labor Day is the fifth. So that should read the fifth and the sixth.
Yeah.
That's a transcription error on my part from the actual calendar document.
Is that right?
Sorry about that, everyone.
No, we, because it's, it's, it's like an echo conversation. We just talked about this with our board, with planning September, so.
Yeah.
I don't know, it's just a little thing.
Thank you.
Ready planning September.
What's that?
You're ready planning September.
Oh, yeah, I got, our permits went in in December for the September.
Yeah, the fifth. So to correct what I circulated, the fifth is Labor Day, the sixth would be professional development day. That's the Monday and the Tuesday respectively. Maho, I, I know you can't talk too well, but do you have any reaction at first glance? Okay.
I do. I do have a couple of reactions. One of my questions was the same one posed by Alejandro in terms of, in terms of total number of days, but that was answered. And the change, when I, when I read about the change of making the early dismissal Friday instead of Wednesday, it made me a little bit nervous. But it sounds like, you know, you guys have fully discussed it with operations and with the instructional team and like, and it makes sense. Like, the piece that made me a little bit nervous would be whether it would be whether families might not take it as seriously in terms of kind of like treated us up not a real instructional day and like more easily just decide to skip the Friday whenever there's a holiday or, or things like that. But, but it sounds like this is a, it's a common thing in other schools and I'm guessing it works, otherwise it wouldn't be, we wouldn't be bringing it up. And it sounds like it makes a lot of sense in terms of like the, the instruction for, for, for the teachers to be able to review and to plan the weeks. And I'm going to leave it at that. I, I fully support the, the changes to the extended breaks for Thanksgiving and President's Day. I think that makes a lot of sense. And to have a week where it's just only two days of class.
No, I'm happy to Thanksgiving, too, because I can take a week off and go with my kids somewhere. Usually it's just two days.
Great, thank you. Do you want to speak anymore to, because I know you've, you've run this weekly schedule?
I mean, I don't have anything to add. I just think it's important that as leaders and our, you know, as a, as a lead staff, that we proactively like monitor attendance on, on those Fridays, right? We, we can't wait until our attendance starts declining. So communicating the families early, proactively talking to families that may be impacted by the change. And then really proactively like, just communicating with our families about, you know, the attendance, how important it is. Doesn't matter if it's a Wednesday or Friday or any day of the week, like we need our kids to score.
We got a question in the chat. We got a question in the chat on this topic. Will there be a summer program again this year? And if so, what are the proposed dates? So Ms. Woods, short answer is yes. There will be, we anticipate a summer day camp as well as summer school. I think along the lines of what we did last year, always, of course, we're trying to tweak things. I can quote rough dates if you don't make me sign in blood. Okay.
We have July 5th to August 5th.
July 5th to August 5th are our draft dates. They wouldn't be the object of the board's vote tonight. However, I can certainly make sure that we come back to that specific question when we meet next, if not earlier, because I know families want to, you know, make their plans. And then one other question while we're here. Will dismissal stay the same for next year? Daisy asks. I assume in terms of time, and we anticipate that it would be the same schedule.
And I also would have, like you said, what was that?
Joanna doesn't want to sign in blood on that one. So I don't, we have not discussed any major changes there, but that decision is not finalized yet about the dismissal times. My diplomatic answer. Thank you for the question. As with the other question, I know it's something that people want to be planning about. So we will move swiftly to get you a firmer answer than that. The other questions about calendar? One question, is there any possibility of offering a camp on Professional Enrichment Days? So we do currently have one-day-a-week plans with our after-school program. But if that refers to sort of like a different offering, definitely open to exploring that. So I would not say there's no possibility, and we can take that idea under advisement. Right now, we, at the very minimum, would expect to continue to have sort of a one-day option if it's just that one day when it's, when you'd like to get that extra afternoon childcare. Okay. So Mr. Acting Chair.
All right. So we need to approve the academic calendar for 202223. I have a motion to approve the academic calendar for 202223. Melody makes a motion to approve. Anyone have a second?
Second.
Alejandro seconds. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. All right. Committee reports. I think the Finance Committee would be first.
Okay. So we're moving to committee reports, Finance Committee. Who is going to do that? Is Bob on the line or is that David?
I'm on the line. Michael, can you enable just screen sharing so I can pull this up?
Thank you, Bob. Go for it, Bob.
I cannot start screen sharing while the other participant is sharing. Okay.
Try now. Try now.
Okay. Thank you. Looking at our standard financial ratios as we do every month, we will see the school's current ratio and total margin are well within compliance of our State Education Department benchmarks. 30 days is the threshold for days of cash. We closed last month with about 28. That number will tick up as we receive our per pupil funding in the last week of February. So this number is very cyclical. And then the debt-to-asset ratio, again, is really just the effect of our capital lease on our balance sheet. And that is very much well within range. Absent of the capital lease, we do meet this particular reporting benchmark. Moving on to student enrollments. You'll see last month, or sorry, the beginning of this month, we submitted our most recent per pupil payment invoice to the Department of Education. Our gen ed enrollment stayed flat at 317 students, as did our special education enrollment. So thusly, there was nominal impact to our projected per pupil revenues from what we were holding as placeholders for last month. Moving into the actual financials themselves, we reckon, through the end of January, we recognized a little more than $500 million, $5 million in revenue against a forecasted amount of more than $8.8 million. On the salary and benefit side, we do continue to carry some savings here, about $100,000 versus budget. We did look at benefits enrollment this past month as part of our operating expense reconciliation through the first six or seven months of the year. The movement that you will see this month are, is the school's attempt to right-size some of these forecasted total expenditures over the course of the fiscal year. We discussed these with the Finance Committee last evening. The biggest movement, obviously, you'll see here is, one of them is classroom and teaching supplies, just in an attempt to right-size that number. There were areas of cost savings as well, namely like student travel. And we did identify an additional probably $30,000 in benefit savings. One big lever that has moved is this rent component, which is an increase of $65,000. That is us forecasting kind of the all-in costs through the remainder of the year to kind of assume the first-floor space that Chase will be vacating at our current facility. So all that to say, on the anticipated surplus side, we are still projecting about $300,000 in surplus for the year against a year-to-date number of 157. Does anybody have any questions on that? Hearing none, I will move on to the balance sheet. Cash and equivalents, we ended the month with a little bit more than $650,000 cash on hand against an accounts receivable balance of $295,000. We submitted grant claims on February 5th to draw down a portion of this. So we should see a decrease in this number next month and a corresponding increase to cash once those deposits post to our accounts. Again, on these very large non-current assets, 44 million here and 44 million here are the leases, is the facility lease that we are obligated to carry on our balance sheets. Accounts payable, it's about $100,000 decrease from where we ended last month. And this deferred revenue component, I know it's a big number. That's just us operating within GAAP accounting standards as to how we recognize our per pupil revenue. So not a lot of material movement on the balance sheet. And then just moving quickly to the cash flow. This is every, all of our anticipated spend over the next five months, which should yield a cash surplus on the year of about $80,000. Does it? And also, just in closing, I think the one last thing that we discussed with the Finance Committee last evening was just a kind of a timeline with when this board will receive next year's annual operating budget. We would expect a full draft to kind of be circulated in the month, at April's board meeting, just kind of a rough cut. We would use the subsequent 30 days to fine-tune any numbers, ask questions, firm up, offer letter salaries, things of that nature. And we would anticipate bringing a, what we would consider a final budget to this board for approval at the May meeting. This gives us the June meeting, should be not have a quorum or anything along those lines. But definitely gives us enough cushion to have our budget up to Albany by June 30th, as is required.
Great. As always, I appreciate the work, Bob. And I really, I do appreciate the work that went into going and making sure we reconciled all the miscellaneous funds and made that expense report a lot easier to look at. So even with the changes, it's a lot more understandable, and I'm glad for that. So thanks again for the work, guys. And ultimately, I think we, we know where we spent extra money, but we did it in the classroom here and a little space expansion. So, you know, nothing that's super out of the ordinary.
Very good. Thank you. I don't know if there's an executive committee update?
There's no executive committee update. We did not meet. We should do that, David, Emily, and Maho, this month. But nothing to report there. Academic Accountability Committee. Emily is not here. Maho, do you, any reports now?
So.
I was not able to make the meeting of the Academic and Accountability Committee last week.
Maybe I can just read into the record the note that we got from Emily?
Sure.
So again, our chairperson, who was at the Academic Committee meeting along with Roberto and Joanna and myself, she said, "I'm very sorry to miss our time tonight. I was able to visit our school in person last week, and I was eager to share about that with all of you and our family community. The headline is that the school feels very good, positive, engaged, calm, and joyful. Joanna has a clear-eyed assessment of our strengths and how we can grow forward in other areas. I'll share more next month." So, end quote. I would just add, anyone is welcome. If you want to, you know, I know how we like to recruit very busy people to our board because they've got so much to offer. But if you would like to come and do a tour of the school and get a feel for what instruction looks and feels like in the building, we really enjoy doing those. And so it doesn't have to be, you know, consider this your invitation, your standing invitation. And we really enjoyed having Emily come with all of her expertise. She met with our leaders. She toured every floor, every grade level, observed classes, debriefed with us. And I think it was very fruitful and hopefully will help the Academic Committee even more going forward. All right. So.
Board norms and development. As far as, we're all approved. We have a full board now. That's nice.
Yeah, I think I would just note that those of you who are interested in the new committee that was being formed, you know, this might be a good time to connect after this meeting and get that started. But we appreciate everybody's time. And so if there's nothing else on that, our next agenda item is public comments. Joanna, maybe I can ask you to slide down here. We have, looks like about five members of our community in attendance tonight, and we're glad to hear about that. So I'm going to go in the order on my screen. Ms. Amacona, do you have a comment tonight? Good evening. Allison, would you like to share? Sounds like not right now, which is totally fine. We're glad that you're on the line. Ms. Woods, would you care to share anything tonight?
One comment, one question. So I want to publicly say I thank you to AP Walker. You know, my son has been having some challenges these last couple of weeks. And she has been, it's been, it's been helpful to have a person that I can contact. And she's very responsive, and I feel reassured that my son will be supported, you know, the whole child. He's not just a child like in a vacuum, but he has a family. And so I just wanted to say kudos to the school for that. The question, so thank you, Ms. Walker and everyone, but thank you, Ms. Walker. The question is, I heard you mention in terms of, you know, people, potential people for the board and them doing visits. My question is, you know, as COVID cases decline, what is the consideration for families to visit the school? And I'll use myself. My son started in kindergarten, and we were, we're in the pandemic. I have yet to be able to actually see, you know, what a typical school day looks like or what kids are engaged in. So it's just a, it's a question for consideration.
Thank you. It's such an important question, and I appreciate your asking that. I'm dying to get us back to normal. And I'm speaking personally now, okay? I'm speaking personally because I know the range of concerns and sensitivities and risk-reward balances that everyone has. Everybody who's thoughtful and caring about kids sees these issues slightly differently. But, you know, we, the flip side of what you said is we have students who I haven't really seen their smile, and they've been here for two years, if you think about that. So I would expect this to be an important topic of conversation for the board to really wrestle with. And we'll do our best as staff to queue up some of these questions. But as we get some more guidance from the state and as we sort of keep watching those numbers, I think we're on the verge of it really being time to start to see what we can do to make school more normal again for our kids. Again, it's my view, and I respect the diversity of viewpoints. We're not going to rush to any decisions, but I appreciate the input there. I would also say, you know, we're fortunate to have two different parents on this board as well as those of you who attend each month. And so, you know, we've got, I would just like to invite everybody who has a perspective on this, who's part of our school community, to reach out. And, you know, let us know how you're feeling and what you're thinking about so that we can be calibrating this in case, you know, we have a chance to make some adjustments. All right. Daisy, would you like to share any questions or comments tonight?
No, no comments today. Thank you.
Thank you. Lauren, would you like to share anything tonight?
Yes, thank you. Just really briefly, thanks to all, thanks for everything that you're all doing. You know, between the testing and keeping the kids safe. And I really appreciate, I just saw the message about encouraging families to sign their kids up for the weekly COVID testing. I mean, my son is a pro because he pretty much gets tested now every week. But I, it's really given us a lot of security knowing that he does have a PCR test every week. But it would be wonderful to see more parents, you know, more participation. So I really appreciate you sending that out. And then I just wanted to follow up on a question. I was the one who asked about the quote-unquote camp. And I guess what I was asking is, you know, I totally support all these teacher enrichment days or workshop days. I think they're fantastic. The only, the only thing is that for most of us, we're going back to work after that federal holiday. So I guess I was wondering if there's any consideration of offering like a one-day camp, like a, kind of like the after-school program where parents could send their children if the other highs have to work and don't have alternative childcare? I don't know. Maybe I'm. Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. So what Lauren is saying is we have these PD days built in. We can consider looking at that. I think it's honestly the first time I've heard that suggestion. So if you give us a little time to think about the implications of that, yeah, we can put that in the hopper and definitely see what makes sense. And I hear your request on that, Lauren. Did you have anything else for us tonight?
Believe it or not, that's it. Thank you so much.
All right. There was no, nothing behind my tone, trust me.
No, I know.
Lazzo, would you care to comment tonight?
Hola, Maria. Tiene una pregunta, un comentario?
No, ninguna pregunta. Todo entendí. Está muy bien. Muchas felicidades. La escuela que siga para. Muchas felicidades, la escuela, que siga para adelante.
Gracias.
Okay. Just scanning the attendees one more time. I believe that concludes our. Oh, thank you. Allison, just wanted to ask one more time. Would you like to make a comment?
I think she wrote in the chat that she didn't.
Okay. Oh, thank you. So many windows to keep track of. Okay, thank you, Maho. Um, all right. So I think that concludes our public comment for tonight. Um, and if I'm not mistaken, there's no need for an executive session. Okay.
That concludes our board meeting. Uh, so, uh, you wanna move? Do we need, I, I, yeah, move to, uh, can someone move to adjourn the meeting? So move, four seconds, move in second between the two of us? Melody moves, David seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Meeting adjourned at seven-eleven.
Great to see you guys.
There's still gonna be some mac and cheese left.
Yeah, it's really good. Thank you for joining us, everyone. Have a great evening.
And Abbott Elementary's on tonight. You guys watching Abbott Elementary TV show? Oh, it's so good.